And I see that Lake Cam is ready. I would like a roll call to open this public meeting in an open session.
John Bark?
Yes.
Will Segwitz?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Ben Blom?
Paul Clark?
Yes.
Caroline Fernandez?
Yes.
Crystal Ink?
Yes.
Courtney Bright?
Yes.
Also present Superintendent Alan Strauss. We have Terry Fleming, Miss Deirdre Farrell-Welch, and Miss Ashley Belay. And recording the meeting is Lake Cam. Is there anyone in the audience also recording the meeting tonight? Alright, hearing none. I'll ask if everyone will join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, I believe we have a presentation to the committee from high school representatives?
Yes. Okay. Hello, everybody.
So, some recent things that have been going on. At the beginning of April, we had our performances of Mamma Mia, which I think were very successful and was very fun to put on. And we also had, at the beginning of the month, the solar eclipse viewing party, which was very fun and very cool to see. And we wanted to give a thank you to the Science Department for planning that, as well as some other science things that went on this month. We had the Physics Olympics, which was the weekend before. And we ended up winning two trophies for that, as well as the Girls' STEM Summit, which was hosted at UMass Lowell.
We had a very successful career day a couple weeks ago. We had 58 professionals. Lots of them were parent volunteers. This was for ninth to 11th grade. And we had all different careers, which included science, cosmetology, and law.
We also had the Student Council Dog Be Nice Week/Spirit Week before the break, where we brought in baby animals and also service animals. And we had a safari day for the kids.
Also, at the beginning of the month, we had an assembly on digital safety for ninth and 10th grade, which pretty much just covered safety using social media and the consequences if you use it improperly. Also, we have a 10th grade sophomore semi-formal this upcoming Friday at Rachel's Lakeside. And for 10th grade as well, we have a trip to UMass Dartmouth, which is a college tour, as well as a viewing of The Great Gatsby as a play.
And then, coming up next week, we have the Film Festival, which is gonna be next Wednesday night. And then, the following day is gonna be the Art Show, which is gonna be here in the library. And that's all that we have.
Alright, thank you both very much.
Thank you. I think so.
Here we go.
I think I'm gonna go to Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. Thank you.
Congratulations. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
I can't help but notice we have a large group of some excited students over here, and staff I see from Freetown Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. It is with great joy and with great honor and privilege that I welcome Freetown Elementary School Freetown Foxes. I am not to introduce them. They are introducing themselves this evening. However, I'd like to make sure I introduce Mrs. St. Agne. She was the first grade, one of the first grade teachers, but she also wears many hats. She's also part of what we call the EST Team, which is an educational support team member. She's also our curriculum lead for science. So with that being said, I'm handing it over to Mrs. St. Agne and our proud Freetown Foxes. And I'd also like to say there is one stand-in. We had a student who did not make it this evening. And he's, once you're a Freetown Fox, you're always a Freetown Fox. So he has filled in graciously this evening.
Graciously, or he had your choice?
Well, Mrs. St. Agne did ask him. So with that, Mrs. St. Agne.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much. Thank you so much. And as Mr. Ward said, my name is Mrs. St. Agne, and I am these wonderful children's first grade teacher. You have ten, well, nine, and a very good friend who's doing that for me today. But I have nine of my students here today, and we have just finished a unit on plants. So we thought we would present a little bit about plants. And what we're trying in our science curriculum is to expand our experiential learning, but also we're hoping to have more of like planters and community gardens. So not only are they getting the learning in class, they're also getting their hands dirty, getting involved in learning that way. Because there's no better way to learn than to actually be right in. So, but with that being said, I don't have to say anything else. Because my students are more than ready to show you what we've got. Alright? Alright. Go ahead, and Mason, bring it.
Hi, my name is Molly. I'm six years old. My favorite thing about school is how the teachers make them fun.
Okay, Austin.
Hi, my name is Austin. I'm seven years old. My favorite thing about school is activities.
Okay, now, it was supposed to be Molly, but we're gonna let Mason do it. It's alright.
Hi, my name is Mason. I am 10 years old. My favorite thing about school is science.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Olivia. I'm six years old. My favorite thing about school is art projects.
Hi, my name is Ryan. I'm six years old. My favorite thing about school is math.
Hi, my name is Emma. I'm seven years old. And my favorite thing about school is science.
Hi, my name is Taya. I'm seven years old. My favorite thing about school is science.
Hi, my name is Catherine. I'm six years old. My favorite thing about school is physics.
Hi, my name is Audrey. I'm six years old. My favorite thing about school is math.
Hi, my name is Kane. I'm seven years old. My favorite thing about school is science.
In November, we studied pumpkins. We took our last one and made it into a deck lunch and put it into a jar with soil and water. We washed it right then.
Mason, it's actually you.
We saw plants growing out of the eye of the jack-o'-lantern. We opened up a pumpkin to find lots of pumpkin plants growing. We all got to take one home.
All everything goes through a life cycle, including plants.
Terry.
Plants start as a seed. It germinates, grows roots, then a stem. Next, it grows leaves, flowers, and fruits.
Plants have five main parts, and they all have a special job. The root's job is to take in water and nutrients. The stem takes the water and nutrients the plant.
The leaves turn sunlight into food. The flower job is to protect them where the seeds fall and make new plants. The fruit spreads and protects the seeds.
Seeds need five things to live: air, light, water, soil, and space to grow.
We eat different parts of a plant. We eat seeds like green and nuts. We also eat the roots of some plants, like carrots and sweet potatoes.
Some plant stems we eat are celery and spinach. We eat lots of leaves such as lettuce and spinach.
We even eat some plant flowers like broccoli and cauliflower. The last part is my favorite fruit, like pumpkins and tomatoes.
These are travel boxes. One way, plants can fly around in the wind. Another way is if a fruit or vegetable breaks open in the seed.
Seeds can easily just fall off.
Sorry.
Seeds can just easily fall off of a plant and fall to the ground. Animals, birds, and spread the seeds everywhere, sometimes even in their food.
Humans can move and place seeds everywhere. Water can move the seeds around. One example is a coconut. It will float through the water to find a place to make new palm trees.
We would like to show you all our class projects. We had a great time making them.
We will show you closer at the end of our presentation.
Do you have any questions? We would be happy to try and answer them.
Finally, we have a little gift for all of you.
We put the carnations in water with seed coloring. And we watched the flowers change color.
Thank you so much for having us and thanks to all for listening. We do tend to have our school.
So they do have their projects that they would like to share with you. And they did bring carnations with you that they did put in the food coloring. So you can see that we changed color, grown up the stem, and actually changed the color of the carnations. So are you ready to hand them out? I'll get a little bit of beautiful people. I don't still have enough.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Right here, Mr. Burke. Alright.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Would you guys like to share your projects with them?
Yes.
Alright, find yours on the table and bring it over to them. Do you want to bring Molly for you? Just came this week, okay? Okay, share it with them. Bring them over and show them your beautiful work. Hand them out. Show them. Show off. Good work.
Cassie, there you go. Good, Ryan. Yeah, go ahead. Yep. Mr. Strauss needs someone right over there. He wants to see it. Miss Renee, there you go. Ryan, right in front. Yep, perfect.
Hi, this is awesome, man. Great job. What's your favorite plant to eat? You know, I'm a big vegetable guy.
It's still a flower. Good job. Show me. Really neat here. Oh. That's awesome. Awesome. Oh, and you open those up and you can see what's behind them. Fabulous. You did a really nice job.
Good job, Ryan.
Thank you both. Thank you, everybody.
Do you like broccoli? You do? Nice job. Do I? I do. Very much. Cauliflower?
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Mr. Clark's favorite plant to eat?
Thank you very much.
Excellent work.
Brownies are not a plant, Mr. Clark. Can I count that as your vegetable? Hey, this will be the first time you got your white flowers in a long time.
Thank you for sharing it with me.
Good job, Ryan.
Alright, so you guys can get on the mic. Who's in, Ryan? There we go. Alright, I'm gonna count to three. I'm gonna push this chair, so I don't have to. I will get these to you all. I mean, you're welcome to get them now, but... Okay, one, two, three, 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 three. One of those will have everybody's eyes open, I'm sure.
Yeah, let them get up there a little bit closer. You can get closer if you wanna take a picture. To get on camera.
Alright, that was great.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for having me.
Great job.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Questions at all? I know they asked.
I just have a comment.
Hold on, my friends, let's listen, okay? Mr. Sylvia has a comment just there. Here, he just wants to share something, okay? Asked if there was any questions, and Mr. Sylvia said he has a comment.
Mr. Ward, you and I share the same job. I'm a principal of an elementary school in a different district than Ms. St. Agne. I'm so impressed, not only with the science, the timeliness around earth. Hey, it's perfect. But the confidence presentation, the reading of your students is phenomenal. And I know first graders, so you should be proud.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. We're proud of them. It's not easy to come up here and speak in front of all of you, and they just did it naturally. So very proud of you, children's families. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, everybody.
Bravo.
Thank you, parents, for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, Mason.
Off the bench.
Good, man. How are you? Nice to see you. Thanks for coming. Appreciate you. We talk for first graders.
Alright, moving on in our agenda, Superintendent's update.
Follow that. Great.
I want to reiterate some of what Steve said. When we started this last year, it is vitally important that we, as a district, never forget our why. That's our why. And when we talk about everything from curriculum to special education to budget and everything else, it's all centered on those kids. And I look forward, we kinda got away from it during budget season. I look forward to coming back. But it's so important. If you think about our first graders having that opportunity to then continue it as second graders, as third graders, by the time they get to high school and it's time to start interviewing for jobs, if they're going into the working world, or they're interviewing for colleges, there's gonna be a whole different mindset. So this is a wonderful experience. And we need to keep that deep in our souls, that this is our why. Because I think we get caught up in everything else and forget about that sometimes. So there have been no changes with homeschooling. And next meeting, you're gonna receive an updated class size list. Let me just go through some of these things. The FES Playground. I want to thank Deb Petty and Chuck Maycumber, as well, and his team, as well as Greg Goodwin, for their recent work over break putting in three drains in a berm to alleviate flooding at the playgrounds. It's gonna make a huge difference, so we want to thank them. I met with the FES PTO at their last meeting, and the PTO is interested in getting fencing around the pre-k playground, which I think is a great idea, both for safety and just makes sense. Greg is gonna be working with them to get a cost, and then we go from there. PTO is looking to do some donations and that kind of stuff. So thank you, Greg, again. The AES Playground will be finished for Monday, potentially Friday, depending on how the next two days go. I see Greg over there shaking his head. I want to thank Nate Garland and his team, Deirdre for her work, Greg and his team, and of course Senator Roderick for this project. Going over and seeing the project today, this afternoon, was exciting, and it's certainly gonna be a welcome sight for students and families moving forward. I will say again, and we had this conversation at the FES PTO meeting, this does not make our playgrounds ADA accessible. And it's a conversation we have to have moving forward. There's a big difference between ADA accessibility and ADA compliance. And we are certainly staying within compliance, but the idea that these are now ready for some of our students who may be using wheelchairs or have difficulty walking, we're not there. That's a million-dollar project. And it's conversations that we're having that, if you remember last year, the Girl Scouts were here, and they discussed that as something that they want to be involved with. So I just want to make sure we're clear. In addition to the broken playground structures that are being replaced, yellow tape for visual sightlines is being put on stairs. And the cement pathways were improved so that there's easier accessibility for people walking. So I just, I wanted that to be out there. May 1st is the final walkthrough for the AES Window and Door Project. Three doors were recently finalized. And to date, as of today, the punch list of items is completed. That does not mean it's all completed. There will be more, but as of right now, the punch date is complete. May 1st will be the date in which it's finalized. The Regional Safety Committee met prior to break. We discussed the potential use of the $75,000 earmarked in appropriation from Senator Roderick and $8,000 donated by the family that was accepted by the school committee for the campus schools. Obviously, for safety reasons, we're not gonna get into what we're doing right now. Once everything's in and we deal with it, then we'll have a different conversation. But the Regional Safety Committee, which is made up of police, fire from both towns, town members in terms of, from select boards, are involved, as well as school committee members. So there's a large number of people involved, and they were in agreement with what we are going to do. Again, thank you to Greg, to Ryan Blanchard for his IT expertise on that. May 10th is the Senior Citizen Breakfast, 8:00 a.m. at the middle school. We are progressing positively with the Ask Me negotiations. I want to thank our IT department and all of our administrators for all their work behind the scenes in helping MCAS run smoothly. Graduation is scheduled for June 7th, always an exciting time. And the digital safety presentation is tomorrow night at the middle school. So that's what we have for now. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee?
I have a question about the playground. I mean, it looks great, but over school vacation, there are a bunch of people at that playground. And that, I thought, was a safety issue. Are people allowed to go on it now that it's not finished? Okay.
No. So the town, I mean, obviously, we don't have the funds where we could have police...
Oh, no, no, no. I just didn't know, like...
Right. So what we said was that we would allow, we would tell Lakeville Select Board, Bob Moons, to put it out that, yes, and you can now use it. Our hope was for Monday. Rain always dampers everything. And so our goal is, Greg and I met today, our goal is Friday. And as soon as we know we're gonna put it out, we'll put a blast out to everybody. People go underneath yellow tape, and there's not much we can do.
I just didn't know what that was like. I just drove by, and I was like, I don't think anybody's supposed to be there.
No, they're not supposed to be.
But...
Not supposed to be. Any other questions?
Thank you for the update. Alright, moving on, acceptance of minutes. I'll accept a motion to accept meeting minutes from the open public meeting on March 27th.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor? Proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
I will accept a motion to accept minutes from the open meeting on April 1st. So...
Second.
All those in favor? Are they saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
I will accept a motion for the acceptance of open session meetings on, open session, meeting minutes, I'm sorry, on April 3rd.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Yes.
Steve? Okay. I will accept a motion for the minutes of executive session on March 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Or any abstain?
Abstained.
And I will accept a motion to accept the executive session minutes for April 3rd.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, proceed by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to old business. FY24 Budget Update.
Yes, good evening. In my Director's Report, in your packet, I have items number 1, 2, which are listed here on your agenda as old business. In regards to item number 7.a., that was previously reported to you via Zoom at your last meeting. That was the FY24 Budget Update to you, for you. And I don't have any further update. It was just two weeks ago. So I wanted to make sure that you had that in my report to you, that that was the update at that time. And these are the items that I discussed with you via Zoom. My second item on my Director's Report to you is the FY25 Budget Update. As you know, you have voted via public hearing, your budget. In regards to the tracking work that I've reported to you that we've been doing, under expense here, I have listed for you the work that we are doing by tracking the expenses in the FY25 Budget that has been adopted. Specifically, I've listed for you some of the areas that we're tracking. As you know, health insurance came in lower than what we were budgeting. We have also been looking at our property and casualty, which unfortunately has come in higher. We have, as I've reported to you, been working with Deb Petty and FES, as well as your Director of Facilities and Technology on this important cabling project. So that is coming out of your FY25 Budget and going to Freetown. They have a corresponding matching town warrant, going to town meeting. Additionally, we've discussed at this table your, our desire to increase our substitute rates. Ours are some of the lowest in the area. So that is gonna increase your FY25 Budget. So we'll have to figure out how to make it up somewhere. And so we're tracking the adjustment counselors in the district. And so, we're tracking the adjustment counselors in the district and the guidance counselors in the district. There was an exchange, there were different certifications, and so Jack and I are cross-footing and tabling everybody in the FY '25 budget. We believe we might have an additional half or a .6 salary in there that was split with 94, 142 grant funding. If so, that's how you're going to fund your increase in the substitute rate if we can afford to do that within the budget structure that you've already voted for. Additionally, we have service contracts for your HVAC that I want to make sure are covering what we have budgeted in your FY '25 budget. So, that's why I've been monitoring that area as well. Those are just some of the expense areas that we're still trying to follow up with you and for you. Additionally, under revenue on my report to you, we are looking at Chapter 70, which is your educational aid in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are looking at Chapter 71, which is your transportation aid in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As you know, the governor's budget has come out in January. Your budget that you adopted has been based on those governor's numbers. The House now has the budgets, just like in Washington. The House now has the bill. Our House now has the budget. They are looking at the governor's budget. Your tax receipts for State of Massachusetts income tax has just come out. They're being reconciled at the state to see what the House can now afford in incorporating in their budget. The House has added some per pupil money at $104 versus the $30 that the governor has added. However, that still has to make it to the Senate. And in my 20 years, what the House has added per pupil never gets to the Senate. It's lower. So, we are monitoring those revenues. That's just Chapter 70, education aid. Additionally, the governor made 9c cuts in January to your current budget. They are looking to make those up in the Senate's version of the Senate budget. So, by no means are we at a point where we can say, yes, you're getting that $104 per pupil, which would be an additional monies above the 30 that you voted, which is your governor's budget. You still have the Senate to get through, which happens in June. So, we're monitoring those revenue components as well. As you know, you cannot increase your budget from what you voted at your public meeting. Anything that you desire, if you will, that needs to happen within that budget has to be tracked and then figured out within itself. You also have to have a, um, a, um, let me rephrase that, sorry. I think of Steve Owen. You recall Steve Owen, Deirdre, we have hired you, and I really understand everything that Steve Owen has said and what he really means. So, when Steve Owen left, you heard him say, "The FY '25 budget has been built on some revenue offsets in fees." Those are the athletic budgets that you're now fully carrying in your FY '25 budget that now could be offset by fees. You have to have the fee conversation about what that's supporting. You'll want to try and keep fees the same, but can you do that within the structure of your FY '25 budget? Those are your athletic fees. Those are going to be the technology insurance fees. And there going to be one more fee that I'm losing off the top of my head. My apologies. But those three areas of your fee-based support, which is parent money, parking fees was the third. You collect parent parking fee money, student technology money. So, what are we doing with those fees to offset your general fund budget? And those are the conversations that we've been having. Your additional area that's not part of your FY '25 budget that we have been working with and speaking about is the need you have within your school food area. Your kitchens, your other equipment needs in that area can be funded out of school food revenue that you're receiving. And so, we've been working on how to take a look at that. You heard from your food service director that there are needs in that program, and that's how we're going to meet those needs. So, that has nothing to do with your FY '25 budget, but it is a procurement that will start to happen to support your food service program. So, I think in a nutshell, that's where we are with FY '25 with respect to budget development and how we're monitoring the process within legislative and being able to report out to you. Any questions in regards to FY '25? I can also continue with my report here since everyone seems to have it with you, and it's all kind of interrelated. So, if I could, I'd like to continue?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Item number three on my director's report speaks to what I'm referring to as cohesion of purpose in this transition planning. We've had so much transition from your previous director to myself on interim, and then we had your district accountant, and now we're having district accountant transitions. So, the cohesion within those transitions, ensuring those are as smooth as we can possibly make, is what has been our goal and objective since day one. You've known and you've heard me say, "I've slowed things down a little bit just to kind of figure things out and continue them in the same direction," or maybe kind of say, "If we go this way just a little, it might be a little more efficient," or "it might be a little more informative." Under this area, A through D, I'm trying to list out for you to be informative to the entire team as to what we're working on. To that end, FY '24, which we're currently in, has to be audited. It's a requirement. We're still finishing FY '23's audit. Lynch and Marini are your 20-year auditors. Grady O'Connor has been your auditor internally, the nuts and bolts for quite some time. Since your district accountant has left the district and your interim Director of Finance are the only two folks that have closed your fiscal year FY '23 and prepared FY '24, I have to be audited. I'm the only one left. So, I've asked not only Grady O'Connor, but Bob Marini. These are your professional resources that you have available to you that I can really, after 20 years, and say, "Bob, I need you to look at this. Grady, I need you to look at this." Here we are, moving the district forward, and these are your professional resources. I call them wraparound services. That's what we do with children. Well, we're doing it within the district with our CPA and our professional services department. So, you see here some of the Lynch and Marini, not Lynch and Marini, not Martini. Lynch and Marini are coming in Friday, the 26th, and we're going to have a great team meeting. Jack is going to join us as well. We're going to take a look. You've heard me talk about the excess and deficiency that was certified at 132.5 underneath what our expectation was. It was a federal fund summer payroll. We want that back. I'm putting Bob Marini on that one. We're going to start to review the audit materials for FY '23 based on the fact that I was the only one that did it along with the district accountant that's no longer there. So, I need to guide the district from a fiduciary responsibility integrity perspective through that process. I am having them look at two accounts in particular that have, I just would like Bob and Grady to look at these two accounts. One is called pass-through, and one is called clearing account. They're interesting accounts to be in your general ledger. We are doing a lot of support for our towns and our fellow departments in our villages. We have successfully done playgrounds and assowam set windows and doors. Our technology wraparound to FES this summer is going to be extraordinary. I think the school committee needs to understand their obligations and amount of time that we are supporting the town's finance offices, the town's procurement offices, the town's DPW offices, and the extraordinary services and support. You will not see Greg Goodwin and Ryan Blanchard this summer. That will be a summer slam at an elementary school. Your community pool, our accounting department and community pool is just unbelievable what we have to handle there with all your parent money and all of those kinds of things. Typically, your community pools are within your town departments. We are running community activities in the community of Freetown and Lakeville. And the amount of resources that operations, and that's why finance and operations right now is so critical and important together. So, long story short, in regards to the audit work that I intend on starting to talk about with your auditors for FY '23 and '24, are going to start talking about identifying some of the support services to the towns so that they can be identified in what's called your Schedule 19. Services to the towns, services to the schools. That is an important part. You see here, under D dot, 1, 2, 3, and 4, these identify some of these support services. If you take a look at these, 1, 2, 3, and 4, you will see an incredible amount of work in supporting two school buildings that you don't own. Two school buildings that you don't own. Four, under four, four dot, if you will. Clarification, I would really appreciate the clarification of what my signature indicates on a purchase order. Does not indicate that I agree or disagree with the purchase. I might have an opinion. But it does, my signature means that there is an appropriation by the school committee that you are legally bound for and to. When I started in April, April Fool's Day, April 21st, 2023, I included the list at fourth quarter time that I was handed that I could not sign in full because I was very unsure of the appropriations to all of this activity. This activity is going to Bob Marini on Friday. So, I have made some decisions for you that I am having raked through, audited right now so that you can ensure that the decisions that were made were auditable certainly and ready to transfer over to Jack, tied up in a bow, nice and clean for the district. That's been my goal. Any questions? So, this is the firm that we've had forever auditing? Okay.
They, they're a municipal CPA audit firm.
Okay. You said they're still working on '23?
Yes.
So... And, hm, so if they're still working on '23, when are they going to get to? I mean, how long does it take?
You have turned over 60% of your business office.
Right.
I am part-time, and if we didn't have the district accountant turnover, we'd be rocking right now.
Okay.
That was a significant impact to our business office.
Okay.
And one that I've reported out to the school committee concerned me greatly. In your FY '25 is a part-time, a staffing member for the central office because you're going to have two more positions turn over relatively quickly. And what we're trying to build is a central office with integrity that can pretty much withstand anything that happens to it. So, when I slowed things down to take a look at patterns and logic as to how certain things were doing, that included some audit that I am behind. The auditors are not behind. Deirdre Farrell Welch is behind. Additionally, I'm balancing '23, '24, and building '25. So, we have kind of said, wait a second. Let's take a look at this systematically. Let's create efficiencies. Let's take advantage of my ability to consult and rebuild, and let's put some things into place. So, I have slowed things down, and I am responsible for being behind on your FY '23 audit. But I'll make up for it by getting FY '24 done earlier.
Oh, no, no, I'm not blaming you, but I just don't know what happened because I wasn't here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
A significant impact to the district in the transition of the previous Director of Finance and the district accountant after turnover and payroll was horrific. So, we were able to continue. You've heard me talk about being anchored to Wynwood. We have put together a team and a staff through, again, I've got a boot camp. It's, you've had the foresight, quite frankly. I got a phone call the other day from a two-town region that is just desperate. So, you had the foresight to say, wait a second. Let's take a look at the market. Let's take a look at what's happened to our business office. Let's take a look at our goals and objectives regarding the financial integrity. We're going to do some in-house things, and we're going to hire based on our goals and objectives as well as future building for future retirements. So, it's been a very exciting kind of time to get in there and maybe redirect some things. But I have slowed things down, and I am behind on a few things.
No, no, no. I just, like I said, I just wanted to be clear because I wasn't here.
That's one of the other goals for Friday is like, here is the existing conditions and the status of everything FLRSD and everything I know at this juncture.
Clarification for everybody.
The two people that Deirdre talked about, who are leaving there, retiring in two years.
Right.
They're not leaving tomorrow.
I know.
No, I just, I wanted to public, turnover all becomes the question, what's going on? So, this is a retirement, and both of them are.
My other question is, is would a forensic audit be something that would be better to grasp everything that's going on with all of the turnover rate in the business office?
No. And I say that with confidence because of the way that I approached getting in there. And the school committee has heard me talk about raking things. The school department folks have been tasked to go through what was referred to as budget shells, which is your budget module and the way you're doing your budget development is very antiquated, and it forced us to get in there and figure it all out. And because of that, it was almost a forensic budget development process. And we're still going through some of that forensic pieces because of the way we're doing all the tracking work within it.
Okay.
So, we're already getting in there, particularly because you had funding resources and federal funding. So, and that, that was being lost, right? So, you don't have that federal funding in FY '25? So, that was even more of a reason to slow it down and say, wait a second, we're losing all this federal funding too? Let's get in there and do a level services of exactly what programmatically we can move forward. And that was the work that all principals did together alone in a room with boards and talking about students matriculating through the district. So, no, I, I don't think so. And I think I'm very impressed with Grady's devotion and dedication to the integrity of what we're trying to do here. He hasn't seen it. He knows the work that I've done and what I am asking him to do. So, I, I would say no to that at this particular juncture. If anything, your auditor, if he came in and said, "Hey, I want you to look at the way you forensically spent your federal funds," I'd be okay with that. But not at this particular juncture from where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just beyond the audits, just a further clarification. As part of the public hearing for the budget, it looks like some of these appropriations, the suggestion was made that we didn't do it. But it's my understanding, we're still in FY '24. Up until, we have plenty of time. Those appropriations are there. We just haven't gotten to some of those projects.
Those are the clarifications I am looking for Bob Marini to make.
So, that's all part of this?
Those are the clarifications I am looking for Bob Marini to make.
But given it's still FY '24, we're still within the timeline.
We're still within the timeline for some f or monies, yes.
So, the suggestion that we just didn't do it is not accurate?
Correct.
That's ac, it's not accurate that we just didn't do it?
It's not, it's, it's not accurate that the, sorry. It's not accurate that we just did not do it.
Or forgot about it, or just?
No. What is accurate is this list that totals $1.4 million. And what is accurate is I wouldn't sign all of it until I knew, in fact, I would obligate the new school committee that's just hired me to this 1.4. I was not comfortable in any manner, shape, or form. So, what I did do was pick off what I could that was in the best interest in the school business official's opinion, not only from a fiduciary standpoint, but a needs-based standpoint. Technology was approved in April of 20- Technology was approved in April of 2023 so that Ryan could get busy with the order we could keep the Dell price from computers, we could make sure the warranties and guarantees cycle that we put together to put our technology plan, that was approved immediately. HVAC was approved immediately so we could bring some indoor air quality for kids and teachers, um, students. The bus was unfunded, no money for that, $495,000, no money for that. So, that's where I started slowing it down and saying, let's get what we need for kids in September, let's get HVAC stuff rolling for September, this stuff will continue to move along, there are still funds available. Bob, what am I doing with the rest of this? Is this really school or is this town procurement? If you are interested in the town procurement of a generator with federal money, I would write a check to the town and have the town do it. That is not a procurement that you want to be making. That is a procurement that maybe EMS, NEMLIC, the chief, the fire chief, the police chief, where are you going to put it in that building? You plug that thing in, you blow the roof off of that building. I would have rathered, and I did sign what was getting ready for September, for children, for the school that you rent. So, the money is still there. Bob, this is my decision-making process, this is what was approved, this is when it was approved, this is why it was approved, this is what is left. Here are my recommendations for the integrity of FLRSD in a building that you do not own. Write them a check.
Great.
And give it to the fire chief to make sure the fire chief agrees with the procurement of a generator to that building. Right now, we lease it in our budget for $12,000. All it does is light your exit signs in that building and as I mentioned, the freezer that we can't use because it has asbestos in it.
Right.
You want a generator to do the same thing or you want a generator to make it in an emergency management building? That's two different things.
So, we have a?
Auditors are going to take care of that.
I, I just, as long as you're not making all the decisions, I, I do want to hear Greg's name at some point in his recommendations on that stuff, but I think we can move on from this, but is, we're still in FY 24.
Yes.
The appropriations are there or will be signed off shortly.
Terry?
Can I just add one layer? Because part of this gets into like ESSER funds, so part of this is ESSER 2 and part of it's ESSER 3 funding, and that window is still open for, for spending and so forth. In fact, we have a report due, data report due on ESSER funding, spending, so we are within those windows.
Okay.
So, the funds have not disappeared.
I just wanted to clarify that the windows were still open, which was presented very differently at the last meeting.
Absolutely. And so, that's why it was important for me to put this here, show you where the funding potentially still is, why it's still on the list as opposed to what quickly got off the list that benefited students immediately and teachers and classes.
Steve, you meant it was presented differently by the community?
By the community as part of the public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah, not by you, Deirdre, but I wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you for the ability to clarify that. I sincerely, sincerely do appreciate that. Uh, as you know, I was a little frustrated, my apologies to the committee.
I couldn't tell.
You couldn't tell? Would you like, no? I was a little frustrated, I apologized to the committee, but I am as passionate, as passionate can be with buildings and facilities. Um, and, um, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Deirdre.
All right, moving on, um, to public participation. If there is anyone here for public participation, um, we, we will handle it in accordance with, with our policy. We'll allow each speaker a maximum of three minutes during which they can, you can speak about items on the agenda for tonight. Or within the scope of this.
Okay. Good afternoon, School Committee, Superintendent and others. My name is Bill Kowalski and this is my wife Susan. We are your neighbors on the ASONA side of the, um, school property and we're trying to sell our property and there's some interactions with the school district and school committee. So, hopefully I'll take my three minutes and provide some information that'll be helpful to you when you come to make the decision, whenever that comes. Let's see, that said, is that we purchased our property from the Leonard's, June and John. John's, uh, was the last farmer in a long, uh, number of generations of people who farmed this area and, uh, he was financing, uh, his daughter's college education and our property's not farmable, so, uh, he sold it to us. Uh, but he didn't owe me for Adam because I didn't come from the town and he was worried I might flip it and become a developer. Now, we built our house, we lived there for 42 years, we're not, we're not a flipper, but he was concerned about that and he asked about, uh, to have a right of first refusal, which we did, we gave him, you know, that was fine. Now, the second thing is, he used to farm what is now Sears Island Drive, that was a big field there, turnip field, and also all the fields that are on the east side of the school property, that was his Halkin Farm, uh, large field. And he asked for a right of way to use an old fire road along the edge of our property to cut through rather than go all the way down Holland Road and through. And it's for farm equipment only, I've got that highlighted on your first, um, page that I've copied, and I'll read it to you, it says, "The grantor retains the right to pass and repass over the existing gravelled road that runs north-south along the easterly sideline only for the purposes of transporting farm equipment, wood harvesting, or related farm purposes." So, it's a very specific right of way, just wanted to make sure, that's an important piece. So, that said, um, fast forward 15 years, um, and his two sons, John's two sons want to follow, uh, follow in their father's footsteps and become farmers. John says, "This land's too tired, um, you know what? We're going to move to New York." And they did, so they sold all their fields, um, that's where Sears Island Drive, that's where Halkin Farm Drive and all the development back there, uh, became about. And, um, off the, they went there, went to Amsterdam, New York, John's passed away a couple of years ago, but, uh, June's still there and his two sons are still farming and they're doing famously there, so that's great. Um, but, um, so, no more farm, no more farm equipment, uh, right away. That's really practical anyway. So, um, five years more and, um, we were approached by, uh, Dr. Flynn, who is a superintendent, uh, of the school district at that time, and they were doing some engineering work to lay out, um, the new, uh, New Year High. And they approached us and said, hey, you know what? A piece of your property is the low point on the perimeter and we really, uh, could use that for all the drains from the road to the roofs and everything else. And we said, yeah, fine. So, it says, taken by eminent domain because that's the process they use, but really was very amiable, um, we were happy to do, to do that for the schools. Our kids all went here, um, and, um, graduated and we love the school, um, system here, so it served us well. So, uh, so they, there's an acre of land and you'll see that on the second, uh, page. Um, so you'll see I've outlined with the dashed line the old fire road, uh, which is the right of way. So, the acre of land that they took, well, you'll see that whole thing of rocks that are out there that, uh, on the side of the, um, the road there, uh, that took in a piece of that old fire road. So, now that's separated. And, um, so we, you know, I'm, I'm older now, I'm about, I'll be 75 next month and I've got some health issues and I've got to move to some single-level living, we can't do it anymore. Uh, so we go to sell our land, I, actually, we went and got June to sign off on releasing her piece of the, um, right of way and the right of first refusal, but lo and behold, the way it was written when the land was taken by the school is those stipulations, those rights are still part of the school. Now, they're not practical because you're not farmers, there is no farm, et cetera. So, um, that's just kind of it in a nutshell, uh, that of, you know, I didn't know if you have any questions, if there's anybody who has an interest, certainly willing to walk the land, it's, you know, to make it real obvious to you, you can see by the, um, the aerial overview, there's plenty of access from school property to that land, so there's, you know, there's no real practical reasons. However, uh, when we get potential buyers, they look at the liens on those rights of way and they, they back off. And so, we're stuck, we need to move because I can't do it anymore, but we can't move, we can't sell our land, we can't certainly buy anything without selling, uh, our property. So, just, uh, I don't know if you have any questions, but, uh, we're certainly open to that and I just, thank you for letting me share and hopefully that'd be, uh, find helpful when you come to that decision-making. And we plead for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and for clarifying this. Anybody at the table, any questions for Mr. Kowalski?
We met, we had a nice conversation.
It was a similar conversation?
Yep. Very similar.
Okay.
Just through the chair, I thank you for the context and the history, that was, it was nice for you to walk us through it and, and thank you for, for being a tremendous neighbor for 42 years.
Appreciate it, we both appreciate it. My dog used to get loose every once in a while and, you know, he'd come back and, uh, but, uh, actually, the, the Leonard's did most of the school property, uh, if you go back to the record, so, uh, they've been a great family as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Just so you all know, it does not impact, although it's close, it does not impact cross-country, um, course, it's, it butts up right against where the, where the end is, um, because I know that was the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Hearing none, um, moving on to new business. School committee meeting calendar for the next school year. Any questions or any questions from anyone at the table?
Just through the chair, this has been vetted with both towns, Freetown and Lakeville, and it takes into considerations all of?
Their meeting dates?
Nothing from, nothing from, no feedback from them, right, on this? This is school committee calendar, I think, yeah, okay.
And this is subject to change, obviously.
Yep.
Nothing jumped out to me as being out of the ordinary?
Nope. Do we need a vote on this tonight?
I'll ask the committee, glance over these dates, if there's anything, anyone missed or any information, suggestions? Bless you, thank you.
There's no meeting on Valentine's Day, so people will be happy to see.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee. FLMS surplus items, are we tabling that for another meeting?
Yes.
Am I in a motion to do that? No.
No.
Okay. Okay. That'll be, uh, tabled for our next meeting if we can. A high school student and staff, am I correct in saying student and staff health survey?
Correct, although the conversation is really about the student survey.
Okay.
Um, surveys to staff, the school committee has not had, um, issues with in the past and we certainly can, can have that conversation. Group of students is part of a roundtable, um, did a number of, uh, looked at a number of, um, I don't want to say concerns, just things that they wanted to concentrate on that they think, um, they'd like to get some feedback from students, one of which is facilities. I know Greg met with a group of students. One of them is, um, more of a high school-related, um, conversation with teachers in terms of policies within the building, so they're meeting with teachers. But because this group, which is focusing in on mental health, um, wanted to put something out to students anonymously, a- after listening to last year and where the school committee has been in terms of surveys, I thought it was important for you to see it, um, and make the decision as a committee as to whether or not you want them to send the information out. It is not, as I said, it is anonymous, it's really about trying to, what their, what their goal is, is they are trying to increase mental health services within the high school. They feel that there's a greater need that has not been talked about. And they're, but they're, in fairness and in conversations that administrators are having with, with students, because the five or six or seven of you believe, that doesn't mean that's true. And so, you need to go out to student body and find out what do, what do the students think? And then that's why they said, let's also look at what the staff thinks. So, in front of you are the questions, it's really your call, um, on the student survey. And if I'm correct, there's never been a question about staff surveys in the past? It's really been a question of anonymity for students and what, what's going to happen with the information? And it's really data collecting so that they can then decide, okay, what's next? How do we then, because they want to come back to the school committee and give a result of what they found out, that we feel that we need X or we don't need this or, I, I can't say, it depends upon what the data says.
Sure. Anyone at the table, any questions, any discussion?
So, what will be the purpose, like what, what are you trying to achieve?
So, what the kids are trying to achieve is to see whether or not the student body who's willing to, I mean, everybody doesn't obviously have to fill it out, is to determine whether or not there are, um, concerns about students being able, students who want to being able to access mental health services. So, in other words, do they feel as if it's too difficult to go down to guidance? Do they feel it is too difficult to make appointments? Do they feel as if their voice is not being heard? Do they feel it's easy? They're trying to get an idea from the student body about whether or not there are more services that are needed or not services needed.
Can they through that, do that through their primary care physician?
In other words, can a student go to a primary care physician?
Yeah. And do it through their primary care physician instead of from the student?
And receives, and receive mental health services?
Yeah.
Anybody could go to primary care, absolutely.
I have a question, sorry.
Part of it, you're right, part of it will be insurance as well, whether or not parents, you know, those parents who do not have the means, um, for some students, the school provides means to, to have, to discuss mental health.
So, say that this comes back and we know that, no doubt, I feel that we need more on mental health. So, are we going to have services available, you know, saying, okay, because we're not going to know who filled out this survey and what everybody's looking for? So, where are we going to go from there? Are we going to have someone who looks at all this and says, yeah, well, I think maybe we need, you know, do we need another social worker here? Do we need an agency to come in and to provide services? I mean?
So, that becomes the adult conversation. Students certainly are not going to, you know, they're, they're going to do certain things, for example, if they feel as a staff, and I'm not saying they feel this way, but, but if the survey comes back that it is difficult for a student who needs, who's struggling, needs to go to guidance, they don't feel as if they have a means to get out of a class.
Right.
Then that's something that the building takes care of. And, and so, the building, uh, Principal Desert and her team works with staff, okay, what can we do to provide easier access so that nobody is humiliated and doesn't have to say, I need to go see guidance, I'm in trouble? We certainly don't want that for students.
No, absolutely not.
The next piece though, is, is a good question, Crystal, in terms of, you know, what are we going to do? And then that's where we sit down and, and say, okay, are there outside services we can bring in? What is the next piece? Nothing is decided tomorrow. I will say that to the school committee, last year when we decided that we were going to, you all voted to add a adjustment counselor to grades. The numbers, uh, Dr. Sullivan and I had a conversation just today, um, as of today, and we still have a week left and then May and June, we are already a hundred, we, our, our two adjustment counselors have already seen 103 more students than they saw last year and we still have a month, two months left. So, it is So it is certainly being used, and we're not talking about just our 504 students, we're not talking about students in IEPs. We're just talking about kids who are struggling a little bit. And, and so the need is there. This group of students really has come to the understanding, similar to what's happening in civics projects, you begin to start to understand, okay, it's not quite as simple as let's send out a survey and now what are we going to do? It's let's gather some data and then we're going to present it to the adults and the adults then get to decide, what are you going to do?
If, if we decide with this and move forward with this, is the parent going to be part of this equation in terms of counseling and all that? Is the parent going to be involved with their child?
So a child filling this out does not go to counseling. We're a long way from that.
No, I know.
Do our counselors work to include parents in those conversations? Absolutely. Absolutely. Will I tell you that it happens in every conversation? No, I think, you know, it depends upon, first of all, it will happen at primary level, without question. It will happen at grades, without question. As you start to get into middle and high school, it's then starts becoming a little bit different. Jack, you can speak a little bit for, for the middle school. Again, parents at the middle school generally are getting involved in this. This is not about subverting what's happening with parents. It's not about that. It's just right now gathering data to determine are more services needed or are we okay? Are we okay?
Yeah, I think there's a piece of this that might be missing because you haven't heard some of the Roundtable conversations throughout the, the year, but these are ways that the buildings are amplifying student voice, right? So students meet regularly and they talk about areas that they want to improve upon in the schools. This survey is their focus for that, for that group of students, and they know it's a process and that, like the civics projects, it becomes a way for them to learn how to become advocates for themselves too. So this whole, this whole process was wonderful to teach the kids about biases and sample sizes and.
How to ask questions.
Accessibility and, I mean, it's really expanding their minds too. You can't just go, I want this or we need this. There's processes that have to, hoops that have to be jumped through.
Thank you.
And I do think, if you look at the staff survey, there's some very interesting questions in there because there's this belief that, from some students, not all students, that teachers aren't quite comfortable knowing what to do if a student is, is in crisis. And I think we owe it to our staff to make sure that we're training them in PD as to how to handle students in crisis, students dealing with trauma, all of those things. It's not about counseling them, it's about how to provide resources for them. That's the key.
I like the idea that it's just six, six questions. It's quick, it's, it's easy.
Correct.
They can sit down, fill it out, multiple choice. I mean, you know, over the years, I've dealt with a lot of kids who've struggled. So, I mean, it's nice to see. I would just definitely, I would like to be involved in this and I would like to see, you know, what we could do to do some more outreach.
So again, absolutely. And that's part of what, you know, we're saying to the kids is that, don't think you're going to do a survey, collect data, and then you're dropping it on us.
Yeah.
Part of the lesson, just like we did with our first graders, is to then bring them forward and say, okay, this is what we found out, what can we do together?
Right.
That group of, of high school students are, there are seniors on there, there are juniors, there are sophomores, there are freshmen. So they'll be around for a while.
Okay.
I think it pairs nicely too. We heard loud and clear from the schools, each of the sites in their school improvement plans too, with social emotional goals supporting students. I think this information will only further support that, which then helps the sites eventually, so. Thank you. I have no objection.
Myself either.
Any other questions?
No.
Because this has not been a typical, a vote is not necessarily required, but I'm going to take the jump and say everyone's, well, not everyone, that the committee as a whole is okay with me going back to the students and saying, you can send these six questions out?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you, moving on. We have a donation on the table.
We do. We have an individual who lives in town, who, I will say their, their children go to our district, or in our district. They are, they're looking to donate the sum of $65,000. I have a statement from them that I'd like to read and then we can go into what they are looking to have it go towards.
Please. The FLRSD and Ponacuit Regional High School are one of the community's greatest assets. Generations of Freetown and Lakeville students have benefited from the caring and committed teachers, coaches, and leaders of the district. In particular, the athletic program at ARHS has taught and instilled the life lessons and values of hard work, commitment, discipline, and leadership to so many. Donating to the FLRSD and the athletics department is an investment in our community's student athletes and the next generation of Freetown and Lakeville leaders. We have a responsibility to continue to invest in our schools, ensuring that our schools and educators have the resources they need to not only succeed but to thrive. We all have a shared responsibility to pay it forward and support our community's next generation of difference makers, and so rather than wait for others to do this, I have decided to make this donation.
So the donation first went to Coach, and then it went to Jim Cabusio, and then it came to me. Jim and I sat down with the donor and it was agreed upon that rather than it going to a particular one program, I always worry about Title IX, I worry about, you know, we, we need to be fair, and I understand that a donation can say it's going to one place, but the donor was very good with it. Their suggestion is the following, the weight room, which is used by all wellness classes and athletic teams, would be refurbished. So that would be new treadmills, those kinds of things. Wellness uses it, I don't know if you know Terry, life skills, students would use it as well. Equipment for the team, safety equipment for a couple of teams at practice, both football and field hockey, as well as cameras which are used for practice. A portion would go to the antiquated goalposts that are on the fields, which if they are changed, it then helps boys and girls soccer as well as lacrosse. And I don't know why, Steve, you might have an answer to that, since your kids play both, but there's something about where our goalposts are, fields cannot be, you know? Go ahead.
So our goalposts go straight, they are straight.
They're square.
The new ones, you set the post back for them, so that no one runs into it, and lacrosse and can't be lined on a traditional 100-yard field.
Right.
Your boys play.
A plus.
Soccer.
There you go.
They play soccer.
And the remainder will go towards a new scoreboard on the field, which all teams that use the field will be able to use, obviously graduation and stuff like that. The funds will not cover a scoreboard and you would have no idea the, the cost of its scoreboard. The big fancy ones that we see at Middle Borough, that we see at some other places, forget that. That, that's not where we're going. We're going for a new scoreboard. It will look nicer, it'll say Ponacuit Athletics, it will say Griffin Fields, but there are not messages, there are not videos, screens, there, there's none of that. And it is our hope that boosters will then help, and I've spoken with boosters, I think we have a boosters person here tonight, that they will help to pay for the remainder, which is not a significant amount, but, so that is, that is what the donation is for. I know there are questions, so I can answer any, but I have the ability to answer.
There is any stipulation for this donation beside of what the money is going to be used for?
No. Are they asking for something? Are they asking for their names up on it? No.
Oh, anything specific that they want?
No.
And can the name of the donate, the donator be revealed to the, to the board, to the school committee?
So I certainly will go back to the person and ask, you know, do they want their name revealed? There's nothing in the law that says it has to be. I understand the concern. It, you know, the only thing that I can tell you is that, you know, I certainly can give it to the chair. The other possibility, if the committee is not in support of this, is that we have the person donate it to boosters and then boosters then just purchases everything. We were trying to, to me, as superintendent, the fact that at our last meeting, we had a family donate $8,000 for safety, the fact that we're getting another donation, a significant donation, and all donations are significant, $100 is significant, means that people are happy within the community. You're not given money when you're not happy. And so I wanted it to come here first rather than go through boosters, but, you know, that's a school committee decision.
I think we vented today into anonymous concerns without revealing names. I, I think being respectful and thankful and allowing it to be anonymous is, is fine with me. I just wish there was a, a good way to say thank you through you or Jim or whatever coach was, was, was met with and if we could say thank you. But I don't want to speak for the whole committee. I just think it's okay to be anonymous.
I agree.
Yep, through the chair, I mean, obviously you, you know who it is. I mean, typically we write up a nice little thank you note, just thanking them, and I'm assuming that will be the case here. Just wanted to.
Okay. I know you had questions.
I have a problem taking it from someone who's anonymous. If I am told who it is, you can tell me in executive session, and I won't have a problem with it, it's a lot of money. I think we need to be cautious on where anonymous donations come from. You know, I did a lot of research on different laws. I do not feel comfortable taking it from an anonymous donor. If you were to tell me who it was from, I don't have a problem with that. We can do background check, make sure everything's on the up and up. I don't want something like this to come back and bite us later on. That is my one concern and that is my only caution. I have no problem taking the money and using it for whatever they want to, but I want to make sure whoever this donation is coming from is just valid. We're not going to spend next year going, oh man, we shouldn't have taken that donation because it came from whoever. I don't want that. And I don't want us to have invested all of this money and then have to give it back because of some reason. I mean, I just want to know who it is. I don't understand what the big deal is.
They've asked for it to be.
I understand that. But again, I don't want to vote for something that I don't know where it's coming from. And if you took me aside and you said, Crystal, this is who it's going to, I'd say, okay, no problem. But I do not feel comfortable voting for something that I don't know where it's coming from.
So what I will do, I mean, you have the right to vote.
We have the right to vote.
But what I will do in fairness, because I have nothing to do with votes, is I will go back to the person and ask in executive session, can I say?
I, I'm sorry, but I just don't think it's a big ask. I am trying to protect everything in my questions. I am not saying that this person is bad, I just want to make sure that we are protected if anything were to come of this. That's all.
No, I'm not.
Okay. No, I'm just, I just want to pretty much over explain.
So I will go back to them. They have been adamant to me that it is not for public.
Recognition?
For, for public announcement.
Right. We're not going to make a public announcement.
So.
There will be no public announcement made.
I can understand, I can understand both sides of that. I will, I will entertain any motions that are on the table for this donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation. I'm going to give it to us in a moment.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting this donation currently as anonymous, proceed by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Are you? Yes.
Okay. And anybody standing for this? Okay, we have.
Okay.
Six votes aye.
I will go back to the person.
Two votes no.
Okay.
It doesn't matter now, does it?
So.
I mean, it's been passed, it'll move on.
But I also made a promise that I said, I will go back to the person and we'll see about talking in executive session.
It's fine. It's been passed, I've said what I needed to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it.
And, and a big thank you for this, to this community member.
Yes.
Yes, let's not forget that.
For this generation.
Yep, thank you.
I'm sure our athletic families will be very happy.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, moving on. A, a discussion over public voice.
Well, that was me, and I just wanted to ask the school committee if we could vote on having Zoom session for people to join, for everyone who can't come to the meeting to just have a voice and to be able to participate. And if we need somebody to monitor the Zoom and the questions, I volunteer to do it. I just thought it would just be nicer. You know, there are people who are stuck at home and can't make it to the meetings and would like to have a voice, or would like to watch it rather than, you know, because I know if we go through late camp, you can't ask questions. And I believe it would be the same rules that we have here, would be the same rules on Zoom, except for maybe make sure you have clothes on and like different things like that, you know?
Does anyone at the table think of, are there any potential issues, concerns, complications that might bring?
So my former district, Steve, I don't know what happens in Quincy, but I know in my, our, our former district, they, they do that.
Not for public comment.
That, that's the difference.
Right.
Is that they don't allow for public comment.
I think what you can do is you, you can submit written testimony if you have questions, and I think that would be a fair compromise on this. I think the Zoom becomes complicated, but you would just send letters through Renee, which is the secretary of the school committee or administrator of the school committee, and you just submit written testimony and then you read it in for the record, in addition to anyone who shows up for public participation.
What about if it was in the chat?
I was going to ask a question about the chat specifically. I mean, this is our meeting, so would we have to keep track of all the comments in our chat for the public record?
So I, and I'll put out something, I'll put a list there about to all the superintendents, because a lot of districts do do this, without question, but I do believe most of them turn it off the chat. And so.
And the mics.
Right, all of that gets turned off so people can watch it live.
Right.
No question about that. If they do not participate in public participation, although they can send something to whoever it is determined, but if, if the chat's on, you have too many people watching too many things and then everybody gets distracted. I've never seen a chat on, but I will put that out on a list there to superintendents.
There's also towns that do it, but you have to sign up for that, you have to register for the link to be live.
Right, because you have to validate.
Right.
The, the name, address that they're in, you bring up a point, good point. That would be tough to do with technology, but I think if you submit written testimony as an option, I, I think that would be a fair compromise.
Right, and.
And I think we're limited, are we limited on our Zoom?
100 people. Is it 100?
We have a.
I think we're limited to 100.
But you, you wouldn't be able to validate.
Right, right.
Right, so if somebody puts in, that's the other problem. If somebody puts in a question, they have to. If somebody puts in a question, they have to be able to state their name and state their address.
Right.
And then that gets read to make, so. Right. That's why public comment gets a little confusing. But I do agree, I do agree that it's an opportunity.
Right.
But to get more people involved.
Right, to get more people involved.
Right, it's just they turn on their computers and they go to Zoom because that's, that's how they join meetings for three years, right? So it's an access, it's an access point for people.
Yep, through the, through the chair. Thanks, John. I don't think we're in a position to vote this night, but I do think this is probably a very solid topic of conversation to kick to the policy subcommittee.
Absolutely.
Right, because obviously whatever we do moving forward is going to be a policy change. So I think that's a good place for this conversation to start.
I, I would suggest that we do all of our research between now and June and, and not rush this because all we have to do is have it be a mess and then people will never come back. And then be prepared to go for our first meeting the end of August. That makes the most sense to me.
Yeah, end of August, September. It's, it's not a hurry. I just wanted to put it out there as yes, this is making an option.
Question?
I'm sorry, I just don't understand why we're going to do it at all because if the, if there's no part, public participation, then it's no different than watching late cam, which we have here all the time. So I'm just confused why we would add an extra step to have to vet through all of the folks that are going to come on. I mean, most of our community, when they have questions or they have concerns, they stand at that podium. So I'm just confused as to why we would add another step with all these processes when we have late cam that is here every single meeting. So it's different if we were going to allow public participation, that's a whole different thing. But if we're not going to allow public participation, then I'm confused as to why we're going to do it at all.
Let me find out how the other, if other districts are doing it with public participation, how they're doing it. Because everybody is televised.
Right.
So. But yet there are schools that are, districts that are doing both. So they're, they have their local television like late cam and yet they're still zooming it in. So that becomes a question. I'll check that. I'll put that out tomorrow. Yeah, to the list serve.
Is this something moving forward we could, we could keep as a recurring agenda item to talk about?
It would. John, through, through the chair, I think where that would come out is right through the subcommittee updates at the end of our meeting, right? So policy sub, this is getting kicked, the policy subcommittee, right? They're going to kick it around. When the policy subcommittee updates come around, that's obviously one of the things I'll be touching upon.
They would flush out the details?
Correct.
Okay. That works.
Makes sense.
Okay, thank you, everyone. A discussion for the table on the Thrive Act.
So I, I don't know who brought, I think you brought it up, but I passed out to all of you.
Yes, this is the one I sent to Renee, too.
Some, some information in regard to the Thrive Act. I don't know if you had questions, Crystal?
I do not have questions. I just wanted to make the committee familiar with what the Thrive Act is and to just say how important it is. As you said before, we're not getting rid of MCAS.
Right.
It would just no longer be a requirement for graduation. And I think that's important for the kids who do all of the work, but they may not have passed the.
Yeah, I think it's important for our special education students.
Yes. Instead of getting your certificates, you know, you get a diploma.
Correct. And I, and I do think, I mean, I look at my own son who has no capacity to, to pass it, none.
Right.
And sitting him in front of that computer doesn't make much sense, but he has to for graduation. And then he has to have his portfolio and then, so, so there are pieces. I think it's important. I don't think, I think this will be shifted a little bit. That's my own personal take. I think they're going to follow Connecticut, which the only thing you have to do is take SATs. There is no state test anymore. And then the state is basically doing the same thing. Each district gets to make their decision as to what is going to be the standard. But this is a long way from passing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I brought it up last, last meeting simply because, you know, when one or two parents call, that's fine. But there were multiple, multiple, multiple people and some teachers asking the question. So I thought I would bring it up just so you all knew what was going on. And we'll see. Yeah, this is not going to be, we don't vote. We will never vote as a district to say yes. This will be, the state is going to say MCAS is not going to be a graduation. My question will be, then why are we taking them? That's going to be my question. Uh, why are we stressing kids? Administrators?
Parents.
Parents, teachers? To, to be quote, teaching to a test, which we're really not doing for something that is not going to impact graduation. Right now, at least we say it impacts graduation. The other piece is going to be to John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Which we don't want to pull because that's money to state universities. So there are a lot of pieces to this that I think we have to figure out or the state has to figure out. We don't figure it out.
We don't have to vote on it. But it was just that a lot of school district, there are over 80 school districts who have voted in favor of this to just show support for this, the Thrive Act. So I just figured I'd bring it to everybody's attention.
Question, Bob?
This is, yeah, this is not a new initiative. It's been around for years and years. And there's no appetite that I can see at the state level to eliminate this at this time. And it's come up over and over and over again at the meetings on the Cape. School committee after school committee has recommended this in some form or another. Never, never gotten anywhere. And until they have a substitute for this, like they were originally, we're supposed to have more than one assessment. You can do all you want, but I have very, very little hope that that is going to, going to accomplish.
So I would have said that four or five years ago when I was working as a principal. What I will say now is special education has changed a lot of this. And the idea that special education parents are having to fight through systems to have their child graduate to take a test that is not conducive to their learning style is really where this is starting to come from. And understand, this is coming because it's in other states now. And, and so Massachusetts is not looking to be, you know, the lighthouse. They're, they're kind of following along. So I think for the first time, there's power behind this. Whether or not anything happens, who knows? It's still a long way to go in, in the house.
It's good to be hopeful, but I, I have serious, serious doubts from, from my experience with.
I got you.
With the.
Any other questions at the table? All right, thank you. Moving on, director reports. Mr. Lay.
All right. So I'm going to be pretty brief here. I missed the memo that FES was presenting tonight and that we are back on school presentation. So I apologize that I do, didn't do a school spotlight. But if you look on page one, you can see that our FES numbers have drastically increased since the fall, especially in our pre-K, which is skyrocketing with evaluations right now. And just to reference that, if you would like to look on page four, we currently have 26 evaluations in process right now. And that's only with one psychologist at FES where 18 of those are initial evaluations for our preschool age students. So that's potentially 18 new students that will be added to our caseloads at pre-K between now and the end of the school year, which is super concerning. We've actually had some conversations about how, if all 18 of those are found eligible, we're going to fit them into our programming between now and June. So we are getting creative with the resources that we have for sure. Skipping ahead to our updates, I'm not going to go through the details of special ed numbers since I give them every month and have been talking about them through budget season. So if we go to page four, what I did hear for you as a result of conversations that have happened over the budget discussion meetings, I've captured eligibility and evaluation numbers from 2021 to the present year, just so you could see. Currently on page five, for the 23, 24 school year, to date as of last Friday, for 19, we have conducted 90 total initial evaluations, which means students that were not special ed, that were being referred to special ed, and of those 90, 53 were found eligible for special education services. So like I had said at a couple of meetings, I understand that interventions are in place. The district is working very hard. We've got stellar teachers and paraprofessionals. However, the influx in student need and people moving into the district and the needs of students is skyrocketing. So we're closely monitoring that as we continue on to June. I've done historical glance of evaluation totals as well. Luckily for me, I have the benefit of working in the district since 2016, so I have these numbers captured. As of right now, to date, we've conducted 229 evaluations in total. So that's including initial evals, reevals, and evaluations for students that may be out of district that our psychologists are testing. Or it could be simply, and I say simply, but I don't mean simply, evaluations for maybe a student that has speech and language services only or may just require a behavioral assessment. So that's including all evaluations in that number, but takes up a lot of resources. If we add on to that, the 131 that are in process currently, that brings us to 360 by June, most likely, if not higher. So you can see that there's really no comparison to that in all of the years, except for that COVID year, which we were at 402 for obvious reasons I don't think I have to really discuss. So more importantly, moving on to page six, I've got lots of updates. So last night we hosted a CPAC parent workshop. Unfortunately, I did hear that it was a pretty bad turnout. I think only one parent showed up. It was a developmental milestones workshop. We did have a school committee there as well as a special ed administrator who was there on my behalf. Ms. Lambert was also there. But unfortunately, the turnout just was not what we had hoped. And we did send flyers home, we posted, we sent a thrill share out to all the district families. But the weather was really nice yesterday, too. And I know that sometimes that impacts the turnout of, of parent participation for things. There will be in the next month or two, I'm hoping by the June meeting, that I'm going to be hosting a parent bootcamp for the new IEP that's coming up. So skipping down to a couple bullets, the second to last one. I had talked briefly about the new IEP has been released this school year, but not all districts had to jump on board and start implementing it. So we obviously opted to wait an additional year, which most districts did. And we will be jumping on and implementing it starting in August when we come back in. So myself and, and my administrators have gone to two trainings on the new IEP. It's really similar to the Rhode Island IEP, if you look at it. And it really gets into really being student and parent vision driven, if you can, if you will. Lots of separate forms currently are incorporated into the new IEP. So I do want to do a parent workshop between the end of the year, which I will obviously share with you when that date and time will be. So if any of you would like to attend, just to get a glance as to how things are going and what this is going to look like, that will be great. In good news, second bullet down, May 17th, we've just had our Special Olympics coaches meeting. So May 17th, which is Friday, from 10 to 1, we will have our Special Olympics event. This year it is one event for students first grade all the way to post grad. And I say first grade only because our subseparate program at FES starts first grade to third grade. And then we have our middle school program, which is five through eight. And then we have our high school program, which is grades nine to age 22. So all of the schools will be coming together at one event, which is going to be gigantic, at Dartmouth Youth Soccer Fields. But they are confident that in that space, which is right across from Dartmouth High School, that they will be able to accommodate all of us. And of course, it was a great day as long as the weather holds out. They've got a DJ, they've got gymnastics, they've got obstacle courses, they've got drumming, they've got all these kinds of events, which is really, really exciting and awesome. Plus we get lunch included in that and some pretty cool T-shirts. So it's always a good day. I'll continue to remind you of it, so hopefully you guys can come. We're also bringing the police into this this year, our school resource officer, as well as our FES police officers, with hoping that they'll be able to maybe even do like a, I'm having a brain fart here.
That's good.
Thank you. And escort to the fields and maybe even back. And then they'll participate because usually a lot of the police officers do participate in the event and they're the ones that hand the medals to the kids at the end of the day, which is awesome. Any questions so far before I keep going? I feel like I saw a couple. No.
Anybody?
Not yet.
Go ahead, keep doing.
Extended school year, we are working hard and planning. We have sent letters out to our families for all students who are eligible for summer services. This year, like last year, our program will be five weeks, July 8th to August 8th. It will run Monday through Thursday. Some students are eligible for the full four days and other students are eligible for only two days. And then there are some students that just come in for services, like speech and language or OT only. So like I said, letters have been sent out to families, they have been received back, and we are in the planning process for that. We've got postings that have been out, anticipated postings have been posted. I've got lots of positions for ESY. So if anybody knows any teachers, paraprofessionals, students that might be home on college break that might be interested in any kind of early childhood or childhood education, please share the word, tell them to get in touch with me. We're actively looking for, for support during that time. We've got our anticipated school psychologist position posted. The pool is not looking very good, but we are going to be having interviews in the next week or two, which will be exciting. We've got our life skills teacher at Grays. Because of students transitioning up from FES to Grays next year, we are bringing back that, that Grays life skills position. So now we will have a life skills program at FES, Grays, the middle school and the high school. And we have filled that position internally, which is awesome, which leads us to have to fill a couple more positions at Grays just to backfill what, where those vacancies now are. And then we do have the anticipated subseparate teacher at FES, which interviews are currently happening. And like I said, the reason that we are advocating to bring in that additional anticipated teacher for programs at FES is because our program students at FES are about a quarter of the population at FES in that building. We've got two preschool subseparate programs and then we have the grades one through three subseparate program. And those are pretty much busting at the seams. So we're definitely looking at increasing those, especially looking at our preschool population that we have that is, you know, kind of looming on top of us at this point. Grays is our big one, which we've talked about since we started budget conversations. We have this huge cohort of students traveling from third grade to fourth grade. And then we already have this huge cohort in fourth grade. So Grays is going to be pretty large next year. So we are working to make sure that we have the staff to support the number of students that remain in compliance as, as they move up into that building. Transition meetings. We are approaching the end of the year. I don't know how we got here so fast, but every single year, for those of you that may not know or that already do know, we pride ourselves on holding transition meetings for kindergarten, rising kindergarteners, rising fourth graders, rising sixth graders and rising ninth graders. So that as students transition to new buildings, we can make sure that parents and students are familiar with the processes, the schedule, what to expect, things like that. So those will be getting scheduled the end of May and June. And we'll probably be reaching out in about a couple of weeks with information about that. But that's not every single grade level. Like I said, it's only for grade levels that are transitioning up to a new building. I spoke briefly about the new IEP. More information will be coming on that. I don't really feel like it's something that I need to present to the school committee because again, the form is very unique to special education in and of itself. So that's why I think the parent workshop would be best, as well as the internal trainings. And I'll welcome you all, if any of you, like I said, are interested in joining me at the parent workshop that I do hold to go through the new forms. And then lastly is just some DESI task work and other task work that's going on in, in the department. So we're working on some revisions with our grants. We've got some final corrections that I have to make regarding our corrective action plan from our visit last May. I'm sorry, last March, that is due at the end of May. We've been rated a district that needs assistance, so we've got some training and follow-up to do with that. We've got a child count report that is due at the end of the week. And then obviously we're continuing to work on circuit breaker and Medicaid reimbursement. So lots of busy things. It's that time of year, things get a little crazy, I think, across the district, but we're plugging along. Question?
I thank you. I see one at the table from Mr. Sekulitz.
Thank you. Karen Burke. Three quick things. One, the modicum for Special Olympics is probably one of the coolest things that.
It's the best day of the year.
It's so cool. So if the towns can kind of put something together for that, that would be great. Second, quick question with the ESY positions posted, was one of those for someone who's going to be managing the program over the summer? Or is that?
Yes.
Got you. That's great. And then the last thing, keep us posted, obviously on the special ed teacher support at Grays as those numbers continue to grow. Please keep us up to speed and if there's anything from us, please, okay? Thank you.
Just a follow-up to that. I'm just curious, if your hearing with the new IEP, if that's going to add time to your staff's involvement or the length of meetings, which may be a conversation as a follow-up to World.
Yeah, so we're a little bit concerned, more specifically, with the amount of support that staff are going to need in navigating the new form next year and transitioning the information from the old IEP into the new forms in the new year. And again, like I said, and I think it was the last meeting, Crystal had brought up, you know, concern about making sure that we had enough support to support our teachers. And that's a big concern that I have, is that our administrators are already stretched very thin. So to be able to provide this, the amount of support that the teachers are going to need to get things done and navigate this new form and be able to do so in a timely fashion is a pretty big concern. But yes, I do anticipate, which you've probably heard at your school, too, that the length of meetings is going to be longer, at least initially, because there's a lot of new information, and it's like different buckets, if you will. Like where things in the current IEP are categorized on one page, now it's broken down into four pages for that one page. And then it's an outside document that now is included in the IEP for transition planning. So although it's taking a bunch of different documents and encompassing it into one, I guess, it's still going to be a lot of new for everybody, which is going to take a lot of time.
Good. I just want to note the concern, if we have to come back and discuss that, given the high amount of evaluations combined with additional time, it's going to.
It's going to be a pretty significant impact.
Impact.
May I also remind you that you voted your FY '25 budget. You cannot impeach your FY '25 budget. And the manner in which the FY '25 budget was developed this year, to answer some forensic kinds of accounting. We've done like forensic budgeting, cent for cent. So I know that in the previous year, in last September, for example, there were additional FTEs voted and things like that. So this is where it becomes really patterns and logic out of how to fund those with the integrity that we put that budget together. So I just want to remind the folks of that as well.
Not noted, but I just did want to note the concern.
Thank you. Question? Well, go ahead.
Yeah, then my last comment for Ashley is just thank you for providing us with the numbers. Someone who gets called out quite a bit for your numbers. They seem pretty damn accurate, and you keep great records. It's great data for us, so I just want to let you know, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Do you currently have a waiting list for service for parents that have children that they need service?
So no, we can't keep a waiting list for students that have special ed. We are required to provide services as they are eligible for it. So once an IEP gets signed, and as soon as a student turns three, we are required to provide those services. There's not yet a waitlist for the preschool, if that's what you're asking. But we anticipate that we may need one, as we're coming down the pike in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
It is the new IEP. It is a project. I just want to say, if you need any help, I am teaching on the new IEP. So if you need any help, and I am now working at the Federation. So if I can be of any assistance, if it won't be a conflict of interest, I will certainly help you out.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Ashley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least.
Thank you. And I wish I could be speedy and just like fly through, but there's some important things that I need to make sure that we have on our radar as far as awareness. When you came in, I was fortunate enough to have our couple-minute video playing behind me of the eclipse. And there were great pictures from all of our buildings. And I just want to give a huge, huge shout-out to our community. There were so many parent volunteers, teachers embraced it. We had 40 volunteers at Grays, like the first day of volunteer sign-ups. It was just amazing how parents stepped up to make sure that our kids could go out and participate in this event and see this, what could be, you know, the only time they're in the path of trajectory for a solar eclipse, a full solar eclipse. I was giddy the whole time. My boys did not appreciate the eggs that I made them that morning that were solar eclipse eggs. But, you know, they are high schoolers, but I was the geek that did that. So I was giddy the whole time, and it just was invigorating to see the teachers and the students and the community really step up.
And the central office.
Yes. I forced them all outside for that picture, and they were horrified. Yeah, it was just great. And our tech team put that video montage together. I said, "I took all these pictures, can you do something with them?" And they're like, "Of course." And they did a wonderful job. So we just have so much joy in bringing to life the learning that's happening. And everyone had a hand in it, for sure. So. Curriculum and assessment, those are just updates. Although I will tell you that I was thrilled yesterday. We did get our email that the Student Opportunity Act was approved. So there were no revisions necessary. That becomes a public posting by June, I think June 10th, if I'm just off my memory. But I will, that you will hear more and more about that as we continue to work through the action items that we put into that. There are changes to the guidelines for English language learners. So I'm going to say that we have had no new English multi-language learners in the district at this point. However, I am super excited about how many of our kindergarten families have multiple language spoken in the home. So much so that there was a language I had to call DESI and say, "I am not finding a parent notification letter in this translation. Do we have families that, you know, that speak this language?" And they're like, "No, I think that's the first one time we've heard it." So they are upping their game and putting some things out in a new language for one of the families that we have joining us. So it is exciting to me how many of our kids are going to grow up in multi-language homes. And I just hope that the families really feel comfortable reaching out to me so that we can just build this environment in our district of all the beauty that occurs in other cultures and what those families can bring to our community. On that lens, though, I did print out, and I'm sorry, it's really small. Bob, you might need my glasses and your glasses. And I can make it bigger. But these are the new guidelines. Most of these turn into primarily updates to letters, parent notification letters, reclassification letters. Two of the big things that I wanted to point out is there is a new pre-K screening tool. So clearly, we're moving awareness and identifying students earlier. Before, it was only at kindergarten we had to screen students. But now, at the pre-K level, we are mandated to screen. DESI has provided us the tool they require us to use. It is an observational tool versus a tool that would be written. The kids don't have to write or speak, or it's an observational tool. So that was kind of a win for us to ensure that we're identifying our pre-K students as well for language services, multi-language services. And then the division of level ones and twos and threes and fours. So prior, level one and two and three were all considered foundational and required an extensive number of service minutes. And now, levels three and four are considered transitional. And so it does allow us to do more push-in services versus pull-out, small jerk services based on their needs. So of course, it's always like, if they score this, they need this many minutes of pull-out and this many minutes of push-in services. So that's kind of also another, like, area that was a big alteration. Otherwise, many of these are just ways that we notify parents of shifts from former, to into former English language learners, our reclassification meetings that are going to happen in June after the access scores come out. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that. It's not, I'm looking through the policies right now. I haven't seen anything that's a policy change. But if there is, I'll make sure that that's on the docket.
Thank you.
The access testing scores are to come out in May, so you'll be hearing about those. I did want to highlight that we have put in for multiple grants, and we've heard back on many of them recently. So I'm excited to share that we were awarded the Investigating History Grant that is covering training on two units for our sixth grade and seventh grade history teachers. We're working out the best way to accomplish that, whether that's creating a four-part learning session on our half-days or having a half-day of release time for them, and two half-day release times for them to pick it up. And they're a part of that conversation with Jack and Brian and myself. The MII Wellness Grant is affording healthy snacks to our staff for April, May, and June. And a snack book that is being created by our high school life skills students. In fact, I'm picking up a bunch of healthy snacks that they're going to try and give their four stars or five stars on, which ones they like the best, so they can advise you on those healthy snacks that you should be having. So that's a kind of a fun grant to get. And then our $3,000 from Senator Roderick that came for STEM curriculum, our green screens came in. So we have a green screen for every building. Those are going to go into the media centers and filming boxes, which is like miniature green screens. You can do little animatronics and so forth. So I, again, I can tell, I'm super excited about this. And we have our, we have our elementary library and media specialists. They're both super excited to get started. Our tech team has one set up in the back, because they're getting all, get all figured out so they can train on it. So that was exciting, $3,000 spending. And then Grays is being brought in. We were awarded the ST Math Grant for Grays for next year. So we were at a convening today, and Liz and Kathy Silva and I had some great brainstorming time for our fourth and fifth graders to continue their GG journeys. We did have, I'm going to skip over the rest of the grants. Those are just the same ones that we've had, just they stay on there as how much we've had this year. We did have two new homeschool students from the last report. And we do have some that have applied for kindergartens, so they're not going to show up in numbers until the fall. And I do have really good conversations with our families and, you know, talk about, you know, what their needs are for their educations. And I always remind them that it's collaborative and that we want to be a part of their child's education in any way that we can. So. That's the summary, and the rest is summary. So the rest, if you have any questions, fine, you can ask.
Yeah, through the chair, and not a question, just another, just kind of a public statement, the fact that I think every other meeting, we have Senator Roderick stepping up and providing funds and resources and grants to the district. So I'd like to publicly thank him. I mean, every other meeting, he's stepping up for us. So certainly appreciate that.
And we continue to send him direct things.
Yep.
And whenever we can post something social media-wise or send a message and include his name.
Just for my own knowledge, his first name is Michael?
Yes.
Any other questions for our Director of Curriculum?
I don't have a question, but I was a volunteer at the Eclipse event at FES, and I was very impressed, you know, with how well Mr. Ward and the staff had all the kids organized, because I was worried, how do you keep all these grumbling children, you know, not looking up when they're going outside to eventually look up? And the staff did a great job, and the volunteers, keeping everybody, all the students in line and engaged. And it was a great experience as volunteers as well.
Thank you.
No question. I also want to thank the bus drivers, because remember, high school didn't matter, because they were out early. But there were primary school kids who, if you tell, "Don't look up. Out that window, it's bad for you," it becomes a problem. But they handled it well. Ken Resendez and his team did a nice job. Terry and I met with him, and he did a really good job as well.
I was handing out 3Ds, not 3Ds, solar eclipse glasses to a visiting softball team, because they were, we delayed our start times for games. And they were getting off the bus, and I'm like, "Where are your glasses?" And they're like, "We don't have any." So I like handed them out. It was just fantastic.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
A quick question, I'm sorry. It's about the training and professional development.
Yes.
You know, I'm happy to see that we got some positive feedback. I was just wondering, what percentage of the teachers and staff actually give feedback? Is it mandatory, or?
It is not mandatory. It goes out, and I just continually ask. We had 237 responses this year, which was up from 165 last year. So a lot more responses. Very positive still, as you read. There were people that said, "There's almost too many choices. We don't feel like we can dig into something." And so the committee talked about doing a blended model where schools will get some of the same information, especially around, you know, trauma-informed instruction and supporting students with anxiety. Like, those are two big topics that no one really has answers to. But we're all looking for them. And so those two topics in and of itself might happen in all the buildings, right? And then there's, and then some other add-ons based on your interests. And then, of course, our full day will still be very interest-choice oriented.
More than half is unusual. More than half the staff to fill out surveys that they don't have to fill out is a testament. So it's good.
Any other questions? Barry, thank you. All right, we're, the next section is our subcommittee updates. Regional Finance Committee. I give Cheryl credit for getting everybody on the same page and getting.
Crystal, it's fine.
I apologize for that. For, and getting a meeting scheduled. So there's a meeting on the calendar, I believe it is May 1st.
May 2nd. It's a Zoom.
Okay.
I think it's May 1st. Is it May 1st? It's a Thursday. Um, I think it's Wednesday, it's the day after the Capitol Committee meeting.
Wednesday is the first, Thursday's the second. I don't know when the meeting is.
I think it's Wednesday.
Renee knows, because she sent up her Zoom.
I guess they have it on Wednesday.
Regional FinCon, May 1st.
It's the 1st. Thank you.
So we'll have an update in our next meeting. Superintendent's Evaluation Committee.
Yep, no updates there, ongoing. Obviously, Mr. Strauss is going to continue to update with evidence to his portfolio. And more of a conversation coming towards the end of the year here.
Thank you. Wellness Health Committee.
June 4th.
Zoom.
Yes.
Policy Subcommittee.
No update at this time, but we'll obviously schedule something at some point on the public participation piece, once we reach out to the superintendent.
And our Capitol Committee.
There is a meeting next week. What day? 30th. In the lecture hall.
Oh, it's right there.
It is the first time that the committee will hear all the data taken from Habib and Associates as to what they found in all of their walkthroughs with Greg and talking about fields. And I met with them right before break. Some interesting information, for sure. And I know everybody that's part of the Capitol Committee is excited.
Excellent. Any questions on subcommittee updates from anybody? Is there any other business that may properly come before the meeting?
I would like to recognize Renee, because today is Administrative Professionals Day. And I know this is my first time working with you, but I know that you do a lot. Thank you.
I have a question to the superintendent. In the most recent event with the multiple sex crime tragedy that has destroyed multiple families in so many, it didn't happen in our district, thank God, but in so many other districts that have happened. What we are doing to prevent such a thing from happening here in this district in terms of the process of hiring someone? I know we do Cory and all that, but, you know, what type of prevention the district is doing?
So I'm not quite sure, the first part, in terms of.
I was just reading about what happened with Ms. Hernandez, Hernandez, which he was a former.
Oh, okay.
The former teacher.
Former teacher from here. So basically, my question is, learning from that, what we are doing to prevent that this will never happen here?
So everybody that we hire, before we hire them, we do a Cory check. We do a fingerprint, which is, by law, we have to do that, because they're going to be working with kids.
Yeah.
We do an extensive vetting as to where people have come from. We do an extensive vetting as to where people have come from, other districts that they've been in, were there any kinds of issues? Obviously, we check with DESI, we check with, you know, there are people on registries within DESI, so we check all of those things. I've been around this business long enough to know that I'm not going to tell you 100% of anything. You know, there was no, the gentleman, I was not here, but the gentleman, from what I understand, was cored, was vetted, and it happened. So our job is to do everything that we can upfront and make sure. Now, that includes what we did last year, which is separate from hiring, I understand, but when we added the Raptor, so any parent who goes in, you have to show your driver's license, it goes through, that goes through a sex offender registry. So, and if somebody is deemed on that registry, they're not allowed into the building, police are called and all of that. So it's, you know, we added that last year. Our vetting process is pretty intense. We will not hire, no one will come to the superintendent, for example. So by law in the state, principals do not hire. They do the vetting, they contact other schools, they do all that information, then it's sent up to the superintendent's office. And then we make sure, we go through queries, people can sign any contract they want, if their query comes back. So you can't do a query until they've signed a contract. That's where it gets a little dicey. So the real issue for us becomes if there is a hire, let's say, August 29th, they can't start day one until their query comes through. So we put substitutes, and then people get upset, but I'd rather do it and be safe than any other way.
I think it was just worth for me to ask that question, because it is a concern, you know.
For every parent.
Thank you for your answer.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, I would concur with the superintendent. I mean, the query is only good as yesterday. It doesn't predict even what could happen, so you're never going to get 100%. It's impossible, but we do, as he said, whatever we can do to narrow that possibility down. But unfortunately.
I'm very proud of our vetting process. It's pretty intense.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Seeing no other business, I will accept a motion for the school committee to move into executive session tonight for the purpose of reason number three, discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
This has to be a roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote, I apologize.
John Burke?
Aye.
Bill Sekulowicz?
Aye.
Steve Silvia?
Aye.
Jim Bob?
Yes.
Bob Clark? Carlina Grant?
Aye.
Celine?
Aye.
Courtney Bryant?
Aye.